Hello, everyone. This is the Village Around Lake Beach Council meeting. Meeting date, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P. M. Clerk, Devin Clerk Hill, can we have the roll call, please?
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Valdez?
Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Here.
Trustee Stout?
Here.
Here. For the record show, let us show a quorum as present. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item up tonight, approval of the agenda. As stated, does anyone have any changes, corrections? So can I have a approval of the agenda tonight? So moved by trustee Cleveland?
Second.
Second by trustee Husk. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Eyes have it? Motion carries. Approval of the special council meeting minutes for April tenth, twenty twenty-three, and the council meeting minutes for April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. As corrected or presented, does anyone have any corrections? Hearing none, can I have a motion as presented? So moved by trustee Stout. Second by trustee Valdez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none, motion will carry. Approval of the expenditures tonight for seven hundred ninety-five thousand eighty-three dollars and ten cents. Interim Director of Finance, Susan Griffin?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. There's really nothing unusual in this particular expenditures. The only thing we wanted to note was that there will be some expenditures made in May and June and even early July that will be accrued back to April. But these are actual bills that were paid and accrued to April twenty twenty-three. The only thing over a hundred thousand dollars was the monthly blue cross, blue shield invoice. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
All right, I know the board covered this in my absence at the committee of the whole meeting. Was there any questions or comments? Hearing none, then, can I have a motion and a second for the approval of the expenditures?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Davis. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
The ayes have that, the expenditures will be approved. Ratifications tonight, we have none. For reports, standing committee reports, any committee of the whole reports tonight from the trustees? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report tonight approving a proclamation declaring May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh as National Public Works Week in the Village of Round Lake Beach. Clerk?
Whereas public work services provided in the Village of Round Lake Beach are integral part of the citizens' everyday lives and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital for the efficient application of the public work system and programs such as water, sewers, streets and public buildings, whereas the health, safety and comfort of the Village of Round Lake Beach greatly depends on these facilities and services, whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design and construction are widely dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore be resolved by the board and mayor and board of trustees of the Village of Round Lake Beach, Lake County, Illinois as follows. Week of May twenty-first through May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three shall be proclaimed National Public Works Week in the Village of Round Lake Beach.
All right, thank you. And I apologize too for my copying, folks, I was out last week six, so hopefully I can contain it a little bit. Moving on to the second item, the mayor's report, the, oh, yes, I'm sorry, mayor's report approving the proclamation, can we have a motion and a second for approval? Trustee Husk, motion?
Second.
Second by trustee Valdez. I'm sorry, Abara, sorry. All in favor, folks?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Motion will carry. Diversity blood drive, we have a representative here tonight? Hi, Carrie, how are you?
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
And how wonderful you have a lot of people here today to hear a little bit of the word that's going on. I'll make it brief because it looks like you have a full agenda today. We have a blood drive coming up on June twenty-sixth. And just to give perspective to that, over the weekend, I don't know if many of you have seen the news, we had Pint for Kim. It was a mother who passed away from cancer five days from the first blood drive that they had held and in one day they actually held the biggest one-day event ever and saw over five hundred community members. That blood drive alone saved over, well over fifteen hundred lives. With your blood drives, I do want to express gratitude since you've done blood drives here in this community. I wanted to express that over six hundred lives have been saved just from your community alone and the thanks goes to you as well if you ended up having to donate blood for yourselves. My goal today is just to express the overall need, every two seconds someone needs blood. Your blood donation saves up to three lives. We have one coming on the twenty-sixth once again and if we can encourage others to donate blood and for their support, it continues to be in great need. I had a lot more to say, but like I said, I think you have a full agenda, I don't want to take any more of your time. But again, to express my gratitude for allowing me to express even a gunshot victim or a motor vehicle accident would use fifty units of blood to put things into perspective. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, we are glad and happy to be able to do this at the Civic Center and we're happy that it's working out and it's being so successful with you.
It's a great community opportunity and thankful to the community members as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Not part of the agenda tonight, but I did want to let everyone know that Administrator Mark Rooney, who has been on vacation the last two weeks, has decided to resign his position effective five twenty-six twenty-two-three to pursue other professional endeavors. We do want to wish Mark good luck in the future endeavors. So on to the clerk's report. Clerk, is there a report tonight?
No, there is not.
All right, hearing no clerk report, we're going to move on to item D, the public hearing for the commercial waste hauling franchise. So I now call this public hearing to order to discuss the village's proposed commercial waste hauling franchise. Director Hiltz, comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Board. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole thirty days ago. The village has gone through a process, it's three, over a three-year process to do commercial franchise agreement. We do have, is the apparent low proposal. So based on the Illinois law, we needed thirty days to post that we will, the board will consider awarding that contract at the next available board meeting. So this public hearing is for anyone who would like to comment on the village awarding a commercial franchise for waste hauling.
Thank you, Director Hiltz. Just so, since we do have a crowd here tonight, I don't always have this advantage, but we could let them know what the commercial waste hauling does by doing the franchise agreement and how it can benefit our community.
So we piggybacked on our, one, it gave us more competitive advantage. We went out for a new residential, that was one advantage. The other advantage is it eliminates the waste haulers throughout our town and our streets and then it gives us a little bit more control on quality and absolutely gives more price advantage for our businesses so they can be more competitive in Round Lake Beach.
Great, thank you very much. That item is not up for motion right now.
We just closed.
It'll be, all right, is there any public comment at this time on the public waste hauling? All right, and if there's not, any trustees have any questions on this? I know we just, you discussed this in the committee hall. If there's no questions from the audience and no more questions from our trustees, I'll call this public hearing to a close. All right, moving on to business item A, swearing in of our elected officials. This is our first public board meeting since the election. So if we could, Judge Nierheim is going to come up and swear in our trustees individually. Trustee Abara, Stout and Cleveland. Trustee Cleveland, if you want to step up? Yeah, out here in front, I mean, I'll step out of the way, so if we can have a couple pictures snapped.
All right, trustee Stout?
Yep, either one, both of you want to key up?
Better circle. Thank you very much, Judge. Thank you, Judge.
All right. No vote on that? All right, moving on to item B tonight, a resolution declaring May fourteenth through the twentieth as National Police Week in the Village of Round Lake Beach.
Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Police Officers Memorial Day and the week of, in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. Whereas there are more than nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States and whereas it's important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities and hazards and sacrifices of the law enforcement agency and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the public by guarding life and property by protecting them against violence and disorder and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Now therefore, I Scott Nichols, Mayor of the Village of Round Lake Beach, call upon all citizens and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-three as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Round Lake Beach to observe Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community and have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And let's recognize and pay respect to the survivors of the fallen heroes. Therefore, be it resolved that the village board formally declares May fourteen through the twentieth, twenty twenty-three as Police Week in the Village of Round Lake Beach and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and our communities across the nation.
Thank you very much. Authorizing and approving the resolution, can I have a motion and a second? So moved by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Valdez. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Roll call vote, all ayes, motion will carry. Business item C, a resolution recognizing Chris Cordez, Officer Cordez, for twenty years of law enforcement service to the Village of Round Lake Beach.
Whereas on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, Christopher Cordez completed twenty years of service with the Village of Round Lake Beach and whereas during his twenty years of dedicated service, Chris has served the department in the capacity of patrol shift supervisor, special operations investigator, task force officer with the FBI organized crime and drug enforcement task force, special operations warrant service team member, field training officer, mentorship coordinator, crisis intervention team officer, active bystander ship and law enforcement able coordinator, TASER instructor, OC and baton instructor, sergeant and patrol commander. Whereas Chris is recognized for his efforts in development of training officers to become competent in search and seizure laws. Now I therefore, now therefore I, Mayor Scott Nichols, do hereby offer our sincerest appreciation to Chris Cordez on a job well done.
Thank you very much, Chris. To the board, if I could have a motion and a second for this approval?
So moved.
Thank you very much. We'll go trustee Husk for the motion. Trustee Davis on the second, and a all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, any ayes? Of course not, we thank you very much, Commander, for your twenty years of dedicated service to the Village of Round Lake Beach. Motion will carry. As we do not like to hold up our police officers who have plenty of work to do, thank you guys for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be moving on to business item D. An ordinance approving a map amendment and special use plan development with certain uses, special uses and development departures for property commonly known as thirty-six, two ninety-nine, North Illinois Route eighty-three. Attorney Puma?
Okay. Usually the village board doesn't take comment on matters until the public comment section on the agenda. Due to the nature of this issue, the board will have a short presentation from the developer or the proposed developer and then the board will be able to ask questions. Then there will be some public comment, then they'll open this up to public comment to the audience. The public hearing portion of this matter occurred at the Planning and Zoning Commission over two nights. The village board has reviewed very detailed minutes that were taken of those meetings and has reviewed the videos of the meetings. So each person will be asked to limit their comments to three minutes and also not to be repetitive of other people's comments so that we respect all of the people here and that the public hearing has been closed. That was before the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is the village board's consideration of this matter after the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So with that...
With that, Director Hiltz?
I'm a gill.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor and Board, we do have AR here today to give a presentation on the proposal. As Attorney Puma mentioned, that this did go through the proper hearings and a recommendation was made by the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve, that is before you now and with that I will open up for AR to give their presentation.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Good evening, thank you for having me. My name is Jason Cambitzis, I'm the president of AR Development. My address is three one zero Seven Fields Boulevard, Suite three fifty, Seven Fields, PA, one six zero four six. Thank you. So as I said, I'm Jason Cambitzis, president of AR Development. My project team is a representative of every consulting group on this page here tonight to talk about this project. So a little background on us, I know you've looked at the notes and watched the videos, but AR Building Company is a Class A apartment developer. We started nineteen sixty-eight, so we've been in operation for fifty-four years, fifty-five years, located in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. We have over nine thousand units in ten states. We build, buy and manage all of our properties. So what I mean by that is if we were to get approved for this project, we buy the property after the entitlements, we build it with our construction company and then we keep it for a portfolio. So over the fifty-five years of the company, we've sold maybe three hundred units. Those are things that just didn't meet the criteria, they are old, things they bought early on. We build these properties for the portfolio as a, to keep for generations. So this is some recent projects we've done. In the bottom left is a project in North Kingstown, Rhode Island called Reynolds Farm. It's a two hundred and twenty-five unit apartment complex in a neighborhood. It's surrounded by about five hundred houses. Those are four-story elevator buildings, very similar to what we're talking about here. As you can see by the exterior, we have brick, AZAC trim, vinyl siding, large windows and everybody gets a balcony. On the bottom, on the top right, you'll see Evergreen Apartments in Monroeville, that's a ninety-two unit apartment complex. It was actually a rezone of a commercial property in a neighborhood, again surrounded by homes. And then the bottom right is sixty Mansfield Road in New London, Connecticut, at the end of a residential street. Here's some other projects. The top left is the docks in New London, Connecticut, that's a hundred and thirty-seven unit project in downtown New London, Connecticut. On the right, you can see the community room there. All of our projects have a community space of some sort. This was an urban building, so the, with smaller units, so we had a larger community area because people utilize that as opposed to getting out of their studio apartments or smaller units and they're in the downtown area, so it kind of reflects that. The bottom left is a picture of our interiors. You know, again, we have large windows, vinyl floors. We have, you know, very open concept design. On the right is our typical kitchen layout, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances. Every unit has a master suite, every unit has in-suite washer and dryer. We have home air conditioning systems, these are not mini pack systems, these are actual, you know, HVAC systems. These places feel like condos and that's where they're built to a standard. And on the right's the deck, every unit we have has a deck. We really think and have shown that our residents really enjoy open space, they want to be able to be outside. So, you know, we do that in every unit that we have. Here's the location of the site, I think we all know where this is, corner of eighty-three and Fox Chase Drive. Right next to Fox Chase Park. Of course, you can see the shopping mall, the metro station and everything around here, I don't need to get into where this is. I'm going to hand this over to my attorney, he's going to talk about what we're actually talking about regarding the zoning tonight.
Thank you, Jason, Mayor, members of the board. My name is Hal Frank, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Meltzer, Bertil and Stell. My office is at fifteen fifteen East Woodfield Road in Schaumburg. I'm pleased to be before you this evening on behalf of AR Building Company. As Jason said, very quickly, I'm just going to run through the reasons we're appearing before you this evening in terms of the actual entitlement request. And as Jason said, I know you're familiar with this from the staff report. We're seeking first and foremost to rezone the property from the C-three general business PUD district to the R-four multiple family residential district. We're also seeking a village board approval of a special use for a planned unit development. And then we're seeking four different deviations or departures from your zoning code. One is to allow for the construction of four-story buildings at a height of forty-eight feet. Your code otherwise limits, the R-four district provisions limit buildings to two and a half stories or thirty feet. We're also seeking approval of a departure for floor area ratio, how much, you know, building can actually be built on this site. We're seeking to increase what's permitted, which is a point four F A R, floor area ratio to a point six. We're also seeking certain parking relief. And finally, we're seeking to allow for the density that's being proposed here, which your ordinance limits the density to ten units per acre. So we're also seeking a departure to allow for approximately twenty units per acre. What am I doing wrong? There we go. I'd like to run through a few slides real quickly that target what the law sets forth as legal standards for a rezoning. One of the things that, one of the aspects or factors that the law asks you to consider is the existing zoning of the property and how what is being proposed fits in with the surrounding zoning. So very simply, you can see the C-three PUD zoning that I referred to before. You can see the little notation, property location. And then as you can see, the property is surrounded on three or four sides by other planned unit developments and other residential zoning district classifications. So we think that what we're proposing is consistent with surrounding zoning. Also, you're asked to consider under the law the surrounding land uses and so we're sharing with you a slide that shows what you also already know, which is the same, consistent with the zoning, the land uses surrounding the property are by and large residential. So we believe that this is consistent with the, and comparable to the land uses in the area. We also think that the proposed multi-family use creates a nice transitional use to the single-family areas that are situated to the north and the east, given that the property abuts Route eighty-three. As you know, the village's comprehensive plan does not call for this property to be residential, but it does call for mixed-use development. And while it's not specifically, what is being proposed is not specifically consistent with the comprehensive plan, which as you know is a guidance tool for the village, it's not one of your ordinances, it's a planning tool. There are a number of goals and objectives in your comprehensive plan that this proposal does advance, such as providing a new housing option in the village, increasing the tax base, bringing in new residents that will support your businesses. This is just another slide that shows you the same thing. And then finally, very quickly, before I turn the floor over back to Jason, one of the other things that the law asks you to consider when there is a request before you for rezoning is how long has the property been vacant in its, under its current zoning? And so you can see... And so you can see that this property has been zoned and remained vacant since it was zoned in the C3 district many, many years ago, over 20 years ago, I believe. There was a PUD for commercial development approved for this property. That was over 15 years ago, and that project, obviously, and as you know, never got constructed. This is, again, just to show you the obvious, which is the property is vacant. With that, I am going to turn the floor back to Jason, who's going to walk through real quickly the site plan and some of the issues that came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing and how the plan changed over time as a result of that. Jason?
Thanks, Hal. So the site plan shows four buildings, 51 units each. It's a mixture of one- and two-bedroom units. So it's 204 units. We have 322 parking spaces, and we actually have a little extra area if we need to add additional parking in the future, 37 more spots. So you can see here coming along 83, we have two buildings right up against 83, and one on an angle, and then another one up on the other side of the property, flanked by detention ponds, and then right at the entrance of Fox Chase, we have our clubhouse. That's our leasing office, fitness center, and then the pool to the rear. So some of the things that we heard from before, we have this green space and land big parking between the buildings, which I just spoke about. That's on the left. I'm going to go counterclockwise around the plan here. We rotated the building to add a little more varied form on 83, so you don't have three linear buildings just going right up against it. We also heard that people didn't want as many units facing homes and into the park, so we moved that one. The one on the right, you know, that was moved down to the middle of the site, and it's also, there's mature trees there that help screen that. We also added a fenced, fence along the property line from Fox Chase all the way down to the end of the site. And then people didn't want others looking from apartments into the park, directly into the baseball field, so that's another reason we moved it from where the detention basin was at the top to the middle of the site. This kind of gives you some cross-sections of where the buildings are in existing homes. This one is from the clubhouse across Fox Chase Drive to the closest house. It's 138 feet. Across 83, from the closest building to the closest house, it's 188 feet. In the back building, Building E here, we have 280 feet between the building and the closest house. And then from the middle building to the closest house is 268 feet. Mind you, these buildings are, they're measured at 47 and 1/2 feet. So it's about five times, almost six times, the height of the building to the closest property. I discussed this a little bit before, but these buildings are brick. They have siding throughout, so the red is brick, the white is siding. We have AZAC trim, and we have Trex decking. And so the top one is actually the entry elevation that you would see in the parking lot. And the bottom is the rear elevation that you would see from 83. So again, it goes through the side here of the siding, the brick, shingles, the railings, and the trim. Again, same types of materials. You can see the gable ends on each side. You know, we view these as four-sided buildings, so there's no blank wall or anything, so you don't look at the building and say, oh, well, that's the back of it. They all kind of represent the same architecture on all four corners. Spoke about the clubhouse here. As you can see, we have our sales office, which is the rental office. We have a package and mail room for the residents, you know, Amazon, the post office could come and utilize that. We have a men's and women's bathroom for the pool and the fitness center. And then, of course, we actually have our club room over there with the kitchen. We have a seating arrangement, television, things like that. And then, of course, the traffic study. You know, we ran this previously and came back again and did another one throughout the neighborhood. And so what we found out was, you know, we did it at 83 and Fox Chase, Route 83 and Millstone, Masters Lane and Fox Chase, Masters Lane and Millstone, Oak Tree Trail, and Hook Drive. It was determined that, you know, has very limited impact on the community, does not change the level of service at all whatsoever. And with talking with IDOT and looking at that, there's, that calls for absolutely no roadway improvements or traffic control adjustments such as lights or anything like that. We also looked at this for, you know, what would happen if you allowed the permitted uses? The basic permitted uses would have at least 140% more traffic than what we're talking about here, meaning take whatever car you'd have, or two cars, it would be three cars. And that's saying if you did the base zoning, did absolutely no changes to the zoning, and did what's allowed there. We tend to find that in properties that were once commercial and become residential is the fact that it's less of an intensive use than what's currently allowed in the zoning. As I stated before, no traffic signal is warranted on 83. And then IDOT actually has plans. It's not funded yet, but it's in their long-term plans to widen 83. And we actually have enough room, and we'll give up room to allow that to occur. Our buildings are set up so there will be no interference between what we're proposing to build and what IDOT can do. The future roadway is supposed to be four lanes with a raised median, and sidewalks on the west side and a multi-use path on the east side, which should be nice. I'm going to go back to Hal, who's going to finish up the presentation and summarize it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Just real quickly, you've all received Planning and Zoning Commission's findings of fact and recommendation. And as indicated in your staff report, we believe the standards of review for granting the rezoning and for granting the requested special use permit have been satisfied. Also, we believe the objectives that are set forth in your zoning code for approval of a planned unit development are achieved by this proposal, and we appreciate all the comments and time that was put into this matter by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the comments we received from the public and the staff and the village consultant team. And obviously, we're pleased that after considering all that, the commission voted for it to recommend approval of our requests. So we're happy to entertain any questions that you might have. That concludes our presentation. Other members of our team are here if you want to ask them any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If any of the board members have any questions now, or if you wanted to wait and let folks from the public have comments, I would note that the time to ask questions and to, by the public of the consultants and the developer was at the public planning and zoning hearing, so I don't see that it would be available for cross-examination again that was done.
All right, then at this time? Yep. All right, then at this time, we'll go ahead and allow a public comment if we could. Again, if we could limit, limit the time. And please, the repetitiveness, I understand everyone said it, we have read a lot of this, but we do want to hear it as well. So if you want to go ahead and step up to the podium, let us know who you are, and you live in around Lake Beach or wherever.
Yeah, my name's Joanne Hungness. I live at 2284 Masters Lane. As you've read or heard and, you know, witnessed in all the past comments, those of us that live on Masters Lane are very concerned about the traffic pattern. I have a hard time believing that it's only going to impact our neighborhood 2% when you're talking 204 apartments. You're talking, you know, even if you had one person in each apartment that had a car, you're talking 204 cars. The builder has indicated that this is not for families. They're not, they're luxury apartments. They're not really gearing it towards families, so there really shouldn't be any impact to our schools and whatnot. But I just, I have a hard time understanding that as well. The last meeting, they were supposed to give information based on all of their other places, how many kids and things like that. I don't really feel like that was answered. They've now moved the building site, and so now selfishly, I now have a building that faces my backyard and is 268 feet from my backyard. A lot of the concern that people had was how tall the buildings are. They're four stories, so I take two of my houses, and I go, okay. And I kind of look out in the backfield because that's where my home office faces. I work from home every day. Thursday, I was home. There was somebody in the backfield doing some work. I don't know who it was. It was like UC dot whatever, and all I could hear was ding, 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 and I'm trying to work. And that was one person. And so now I have to think about our whole neighborhood. A lot of us do work from home, and bulldozers, and dump trucks, and trees being torn down, and the traffic from that. And so the impact to us, we all live in Fox Chase. I don't think any of you live in our neighborhood, and we're very concerned about the safety of our children. A lot of people are going to talk about the traffic. I'm not going to beat that dead horse. Anybody who has been in Fox Chase knows what we face on a daily basis. They had their cameras there for seven days straight. They only captured two days. They, if you had it there for seven days, capture the entire 24 hours for seven days and report on it, okay? My husband, I drop him and pick him up at the train station two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. The people cannot walk from those apartments to the Metro. They're going to be cutting through our neighborhood, or they're going to cut through the back of Love and Oven, and they're going to walk to the Millstone Light, and they're going to walk across to Home Depot that has no sidewalks to get back there, right? There's just a sidewalk right there at Millstone and 83. All of those people, because if they're gearing it towards the people who live, work downtown, want to live in the suburbs, they're going to commute, all of those people are going to be driving their cars or walking over to the train station. There's only a back entrance to Home Depot. That's where I pick up my husband twice a week. There's about five or six people right now that walk through, and they're all rushing across. And so think about the dangerousness of possibly 100 people, 200 people commuting downtown. I know Metro is hurting. They could probably use the business, but you won't even be able to fit all of those people because, as you know, it goes from Round Lake Beach all the way to Union. By the time my husband gets downtown, you, there's not a seat on the train. And people are bringing their bikes on the train and all of those other things. And so it sounds great that you can build this apartment complex and use the Metro rail system, but the actuality of it is, is that train's already packed. And so it just doesn't, it doesn't leave enough room for everybody. And so besides the inconvenience to our neighborhood, the dangerousness, the overload to Metro, you know, just think about if any of you have been back onto Fox Chase, and it's a nice, quiet suburb, build houses back there if you want. It's zoned for commercial, so it's up to you guys to hear us, think about all the things that we've said. Yes, we're all angry, and I appreciate the time. We are all upset. We're, I've been here 24 years. I know some of my neighbors here have been here for 30 years. And we like our, we like our neighborhood and the aesthetics of it, and to put four-story buildings in 10.5 acres and hope that people can make it safely to the Metro and hope that IDOT gets their budget together and you get a four-lane highway. I've wanted a four-lane highway for the 24 years that I've lived here. So I mean, it's just, and it's still maybe in the budget, maybe in the budget five years from now, maybe, right? And maybe this will bring that tax revenue. I don't know. But it's really aesthetically displeasing to the Fox Chase neighborhood, the Oak Tree Trail neighborhood, the Millstone neighborhood. We're all connected to each other. And so anyway, that's all I have to say, but thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Can interrupt, but try to keep the comments shorter. We will be extremely all-night-long. We have a long agenda tonight as well above and beyond this. But I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak, but we have to be shorter and quicker about it because we have heard a lot of this. But we want to make sure you have your time.
Can you hear me?
You can take the mic if you want.
My name's Melissa Cotter. I'm at 2354 Scott Court. My house is on the bike walk trail, and this development would be in clear view of my backyard, just for transparency. So I've attended the last two meetings regarding the rezoning proposal for the apartments, and what has surprised me the most is the volume of valid questions being raised by my fellow neighbors, and most of them have gone unanswered. So to your point from earlier, many of our questions actually didn't get answered, so that's kind of what I want to highlight here today. So I'm aware of the public comments section part of the agenda is just that, comments. That was mentioned many times. But it would seem that, given the public comments are before the commissioner Q and A portion of the agenda, our comments should have had an impact on the questions being raised by the commissioners or in the public, or is the public comments section just lip service? While I do appreciate the probing done by some of the commissioners, it is disappointing that other commissioners did not take the questions raised into account and asked very few questions of the development team, knowing their questions required answers, before they made their final decision. If this is now the form to have those questions re-asked and hopefully answered, please consider respecting our concerns raised through this development team and asking these questions on our behalf. So number one, why this specific location? With the number of vacant commercial property available and having other locations, or have other locations been considered as well? As an example, the Kmart property is commercial. It can be rezoned, and it is bigger than the site that is in question, and it won't infringe on public or surrounding neighborhoods.
I'm just going to ask, who do you think owns Kmart?
I don't know, but you know, it's an example.
The village does not own Kmart? Or does anyone who wants to sell it right now?
Okay, but fair, fair.
That's an answer to the question.
But other, there are plenty. There's other locations that were even brought up in the other two meetings that are for-sale signs around them, they're larger properties, that, you know, have they been considered? We haven't had the answers to those questions. And if other locations have been considered, that goes to my next point, so a nice segue, why is this one still more appealing? From a convenience factor, land west of 83 would seem more logical or practical, given it is truly walkable to stores and to the train, which is being proposed as a selling point for this specific site. Another excellent question raised by our fellow neighbors is, has anyone walked from this site location to the trains and the shops across 83? That hasn't been answered, and it's currently not safe to even walk that, and I think you've mentioned this just now, but it's not safe. And it's been raised in the last two meetings, and it still hasn't been answered, but I would assume that the answer is no, but for proper due diligence, this should actually be part of the analysis. Number four, the traffic study done is a poor representation of data analytics. It seems that the outcome of this study does not factor the real traffic patterns of this community, and decisions are being made off of one weekday, one hour, and one weekend day, one hour, instead of listening to the people that drive in the subdivision every day. The current infrastructure does not support the volume of people being added to this location. There is no plan to add a light at 83 and Fox Chase. Currently, no one goes south on 83 at this intersection because it's impossible to get onto 83. Adding another 300 to 400 people to an area and expect that they will not make the same traffic decisions that we make every day seems illogical. And lastly, the questions regarding Section 8 housing has been raised, and they have confirmed it will not be Section 8. However, what was not discussed is how many apartments will be allocated to Section 8 requirements? And if these apartments can't be rented due to high price points or low demand, will they then be eligible for Section 8 housing? So let me just wrap up by saying, please respect the citizens of this community by requiring answers to these questions tonight and provide insights to us before making the final decision. Many of us have lived in this community for over 25 years, and we have a lot at stake with our daily lives and our property. If these apartments are needed to expand the community and more revenue for the village and increase the economic impact to the businesses, fine. Just say no to rezoning this location and pick a more suitable location somewhere else in Round Lake Beach. Thank you.
All right, I definitely didn't want to start a timer. Hey, believe me, folks.
I have a timer, and I'm going to start.
All right, I just, I just want to make sure because we do have, we have to let everyone speak.
Understood, and I'll be brief.
Thank you, sir.
You have three minutes allotted. Target that you have, so. Right now, okay. The gentleman representing the developer alluded to your villages, our villages, really, spending our money, the comprehensive plan. The gentleman, the attorney, alluded to the fact that it's advisory, not regulatory in nature. That is true. However, it is based upon the expertise of not only past members of the village staff, past members of the village board, and experts brought in specifically to develop that comprehensive plan. So it is not just a suggestion based on expertise grounded in the village and knowledge of the village, how it operates and how their vision for its future is. Lady just suggested that there are probably better places for this kind of development. It is not a transitional use, contrary to the attorney's statement. Going from Going from a residential density of the Fox Chase subdivision to twice what is allowed in your ordinance is not transitional in nature. That is not how you transition from residential to commercial and find that you're 200 people in 10 acres as opposed to 20. So the comprehensive plan actually identifies a site that is more appropriate for this in, in the key development area. Page 60 of the comprehensive plan, it alludes to that Hook Farm site as a mix of commercial facing 83 with townhomes on the rear. It's a 20-acre site. This development could simply occupy that townhome 10 acres on the rear, preserving the prospect of commercial development along the 83 corridor, which is a key aspect of the comprehensive plan. Developer will get he, what he wants, the village would get what it, in its comprehensive plan has stated it wants and preserving the nature of the Fox Chase East parcel for the intended development as pointed out in the comprehensive plan. Mixed use, commercial, targeting a possible senior facility, which was identified as one of the goals of the comprehensive plan, to provide continued residence in the village for aging adults who are already members of the community. So that being said, my time is finishing up here. I have much more to say, but apparently the public comment has expired.
Thank you.
You're in luck. Radio DJ by trade, three minutes, this will be easy. Joseph Pitt, 2326 Masters Lane. My wife and I bought this house on Masters Lane in 2021 specifically because of the neighborhood. That's why we came to Round Lake Beach. Had we known you were going to erect an apartment building, we wouldn't be living here, wouldn't be starting a family here. My father, who is a traffic engineer by trade, was on the phone listening to the presentation and said, "At best, the information that was presented is vague, at worst manipulated." So ask specifically what the traffic impact is between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM, Monday through Friday, and then 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Weekends are irrelevant because overnight traffic is nil and affects data. And finally, just as a reminder, most of you are elected people and a neighborhood this big doesn't forget. Thank you.
I promise you, it's one page and it's bullet point. Hello, my name's, hello and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Anthony Finan. I live at 653 East Peachtree Lane, Round Lake Beach. That is in the Silver Oaks subdivision. I'm a social studies teacher at a middle school and as such, I used to teach the U.S. Constitution. I bring this up because that is what I would like to remind the people of. We have a representative democracy. You, the city council, are a great example of a representative democracy. You were elected but to be the voice of your constituents. Your constituents are the people of Round Lake Beach, specifically in this case, those who live in and near Fox Chase. Some have lived here for a year or two, moved into Fox Chase to raise their families, based on what they saw when they were house shopping. Others have lived here for 20 or more years and have raised their families because of what it offered. Please listen to the people and be their voice. Some of these people have already spoken, most likely more will speak after me. Please listen to what they have to say. I believe they make their point very clear. Then vote based on what your constituents are telling you. These are your constituents, not the people from Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Minerva Guerra and I live in the Fox Chase subdivision. I've been in this area for almost 30 years now. And one of the questions that I have, that I have not heard either response or even asked, what impact is this going to have on our first responders? This area is already maxed out, I feel, with crimes. Are we going to increase our police force? Sometimes our police force has to go to other villages to respond to any, you know, emergencies. So I have not heard from the, from the fire department or the police department. And also are they going to be using the same access points that, through Fox Chase to get to the complex? So these are questions that I have or perhaps other members have, have asked or have been raised. This to me is very concerning and also the builders have not addressed how they're going to do background checks on the person, the people that are going to be renting these apartments. They may do background checks to see if they are able to pay their, their rent, but are they going to do background checks on criminal backgrounds? Because we are concerned about crime in this area and especially those in connection with children. Can we get some answers on the, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for taking our comments and our concerns. My name is Gabriel Lopez. I live on 1070 East Martingale. Been there for over 22, 23 years. It's our community, it's our homes. I don't have the colorful vocabulary that some of these attorneys and professionals have, but I do know that when I see my neighbors, they're my people, they're my community. I love my community. And it's not only my home, my two daughters, one lives across the street from these giant buildings, Silver Oaks, one just across the street, not across the street, across the park on the other side. My mother-in-law lives right on the other side of the park. My sister-in-law lives down the street on Fox Chase. And my other relative lives, actually owns a house on Master, Masters, and she's pretty concerned as well. I don't know what's going to happen, honestly. I've been thinking about it. I go to work, I think about it during the day when I'm working, when I'm, you know, going through all these things. I think about my neighbors, I think about all the things that have been said. But all in all, the decision relies on you, honestly, not on me. It relies on all of you. If this project or development works out, and let's just say that you vote yes, wonderful. You know, give your hand on your back and say, congratulations, I think we did well. But if it doesn't work out, 10, 12, 15 years down the road, you're going to drive by and you're going to say, boy, did I fumble the ball? Did I mess up here? Because you know what? I'm part of several committees in my church and my school, Christian Academy, SDA and Gurnee, and our votes carry quite a better weight. I know that, especially you, a lot more weight. So please, think about it, make the right decision and think about all of us because we do count. Thank you very much.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor and people of the board. My name is Jonathan Demuth. I live at 2251 Masters Lane, Round Lake Beach, Illinois. I'll keep this brief. I'm basically up here to talk a little bit more about the traffic, not going to touch on any points that other people have already made. It's kind of been said and done. I do notice that a lot of people did not really touch on Millstone Drive between Love and Ovens and Goodwill. Last time I asked some questions that never really got answered today or last time about the traffic on that road. If you've watched the video of the previous meeting, which I'm assuming most of you have, you will probably have noticed that the traffic guy was very vague when talking about Millstone Drive specifically. As you probably know as well from other people talking at the last meeting, traffic generally goes from Masters to Millstone because no one likes going off of 83, just how it is. So Millstone Drive is tend, tends to be the busier way to leave the neighborhood as well as Hook. When it comes to Millstone Drive, the traffic there is pretty rough, not just because of the traffic lining up down Millstone Drive, but because of also the stop signs on either side from people leaving Goodwill as well as people leaving from Love and Ovens. The traffic there gets so bad sometimes that you tend to have to wait almost three lights just to leave that road if you're sitting on either Goodwill or Love and Oven side. Thankfully, the stop signs are there again because there was a point in time where there was no stop signs and people were just flying out of there and I almost got hit like three times. Another thing I wanted to touch on real quick was the expansion to 83, which will honestly, let's be honest, probably not happen anytime soon. If that expansion did happen, a light would almost be certainly necessary there anyways because there would be absolutely no way to turn left from Fox Chase Drive back out to 83. It'd almost be a guaranteed needed thing at that point. Thank you for your time.
Trustees, Mayor, Dan Guerra, live in Fox Chase, and I have three brief points. Everybody's heard about the traffic and that's a big concern. I recall right before COVID hit that there were hearings to put a medical building on that site. Part of that planning was to include a stop, a light at that intersection. You know, the, the process didn't go through because COVID, people backed out, but that proposal did have a light at that intersection that we're all very concerned about. Second point is a light study was done. We asked for light pollution. And based on the village board, if you drive through the neighborhood, the houses are spaced out and they have their lights on their driveway, their front entrance, their back entrance. However, you're putting 51 units, all balconies, they all have a light. Theoretically, they're probably not going to all be on, but what's that going to do for light pollution for those of us that have to look at it? And on the note of light pollution, one of the things I love about that neighborhood is walking through the park and being in the park, and I raised my kids there, watching the sunset, which will now be non-existent.
Sorry, I'm small. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. My name is Laura Pasternak. I live at 1933 Oak Tree Trail. I moved here when I was expecting our first daughter. She is now 31. I am here tonight and was in attendance at the two previous zoning meetings along with many of my neighbors. I am hoping tonight you not only listen, but you hear our concerns. I want to highlight one word, community. Our area represents several different school districts and five different subdivisions. We are still a strong, involved and active community together and we are here again and we continue to oppose this development. The development is not the right fit for this parcel of land. The zoning changes should be denied due to traffic, light, noise pollution concerns along with the height of this project. And I feel it doesn't meet the standards in variance 306.2 subsections B, E and F. That's traffic, it's, it's our quality of life and it's also the resale values on our homes. In addition, I wonder if this were going to be a commercial development as the land is currently zoned, would you even approve four 48-feet commercial buildings on this site? Probably not. Along with the congestion this will bring, the aesthetics of this development, merely feet from a very busy two-lane, maybe four-lane Route 83 concerns me. Long-term residents will have to contend with the four huge buildings from their backyard views and no fence or proposed landscaping will ever change this. I know this may be viewed as NIMBY, not in my backyard, but I wonder, who wants four 48 tall buildings in their backyard? I want to meet that person. There are better locations to put this development, but this is not the right place. We have invested in this community for many years. We did not commit to just a yearly lease. We signed our mortgage papers and we committed to this community for the long term. We are here asking you to do the right thing for the residents of the community and deny the many, many variances of this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time letting me speak. My name is Rob Getmer. I live at 2254 Masters. My home is near the south end of the walking path facing west towards the property. We've lived there for 27 years and we've been happy to, happy to be here. My concern is, or my thought is, that nobody knows this neighborhood like the people who live here 24/7 on Fox Chase, Masters, Oak Tree Trail, Wood Oak, all the streets. Nobody knows it like we do. And we know what's going to happen to the neighborhood. It's going to change from a, the look and feel is going to change from a suburban type feel to more of an active city type feel. We know that. And as far as traffic flow and traffic safety, we know exactly what people are going to do. We know exactly what the occupants are going to do. They're going to do the same thing that we do. Use Masters, Millstone, Oak Tree Trail, Hook Drive to cut through and get to and from what they're doing. So I, we know that's going to happen. I know there was a traffic safety study and, you know, I just don't think that you could put up a few cameras and a few poles and count cars for a few hours and then from that be able to say what it's going to be like traffic-wise 24/7 for the people who live there. You know? And I think that the people here tonight, the people in that little section of town, like myself, we've been here 27 years, people have been here 10 years, 15, 25, 27 years. And we've paid our taxes, we've supported the local business, we kept our property nice. And I just think that we do deserve to have a voice that means something on this issue. You know, I was reading the city bulletin, the beach bulletin that comes with the water bills. In all the years, I always read them front to back because I want to know what's going on in town. And the mayor's message, including yourself, Mr. Nichols, I appreciate you. The, they always talk about the top priority for the village of Round Lake Beach. I'm paraphrasing, but basically it's the concern, safety and well-being of the residents. I think we make up a big core group of your residents and we've talked about our concerns. You know, so you guys have an opportunity tonight. For all these years that this bulletin has expressed that the top priority for the city is the well-being of the residents, especially the core residents, you know, I would ask that you back up those words tonight. You know what I mean? You've heard all the concerns, you know, and I, and I'm here, I'm speaking for myself. I'm not anti these apartments in Round Lake Beach. I'm completely cool with them, but just not at this spot. There's too many safety concerns, you know, Fox Chase and Masters. I know what the traffic does on that. For 27 years, I've been cringing when I said kids dart out between the cars to get to and from the park on Masters or Fox Chase. Now you're adding significantly more cars cutting through the neighborhood, more speed because there's probably going to be a lot of younger occupants and younger occupants tend to drive faster, to be honest. And you're going to add more kids. So that's all being added to the equation. And like I said, we know what they're going to do traffic-wise, the same thing that all of us have figured out how to do. So thank you for your time.
I'm Renee Do, I've been on Masters. I raised our kids there. They have now graduated off doing their adulting thing. I am in the house that is closest. Thank you for pivoting that apartment. Maybe if you pivot back to how it was before, so I don't have to be that close. But the one thing I noticed, we just moved our daughter into an apartment and the garbage. Oh my God, the garbage is crazy. Are you going to offer valley garbage service and how is that going to be managed with recyclables? They have a much smaller complex and it's overloaded. I work from home, my backyard is the field. I don't want to be on a conference call with a nasty wolf of somebody's garbage spoiling. That is my concern. I don't see anywhere where your garbage is going to be located.
It's, it's a comment section, ma'am. They can't answer you at this time.
I will let you.
I believe it was on the plan.
Mayor, trustees. My name is Ken Peterson. I am a 30-year resident on Meadows and Bugle, but I have been here long enough. I've seen the Fox Chase community or our Fox Chase subdivision grow and Masters Lane is a main thoroughfare for our neighborhood. And on the weekends, because parking is allowed on both sides of the streets and you have a combination of parties going, you know, family gatherings going on, you have landscaping trucks parked on the street, no, Masters Lane becomes a one-lane road for the majority of Saturday during, from 10 o'clock to 2:00 PM. of Saturday during, from 10 o'clock to 2:00 p.m. You're jockeying to get through there. And then the other issue is that the traffic study did not even bring up the fact that we have school buses that use Masters Lane in the mornings, when traffic is going to be the heaviest, and in the afternoons, again. So, I mean, we've got, Masters Lane becomes a standstill at times because of these factors, and really cannot support the additional traffic that this community, this apartment community, is going to push through our neighborhood. If it's so important for them to build that, then have them put an entrance onto 83, prohibit them from making a right turn out of their complex onto Fox Chase Drive. There is a space between the two buildings that are on 83, that's green space right now. I think it was initially set up as additional parking. I'm not sure if that's still in the plan, but it's right between those two buildings. Make your access to 83 there, and have your residents go out there. And then prohibit them from going through the Fox Chase neighborhood. That would alleviate a lot of concerns in this room. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak at this time before we close it?
Hi, I'm Carolyn Ricard, and I live in the Oak Tree subdivision for past over 30 years now. And what I've heard from everybody, and we're all concerned about adding more population. I mean, it's already really high-density neighborhoods, and what we don't need is more buildings, more residents. What we do need more is more open space and nature. And I just, I think, I remember a few years ago, Round Lake wanted to, had a policy of beautifying the neighborhood. People came, you know, came around and gave, or, you know, made sure everyone kept their houses and properties nice, but I would like for the, you know, the village to also do that. I propose maybe the village could buy that property and have the Park District maintain it? I mean, who owns the property now?
I'm an individual.
Okay, but like I know in Gray's Lake, they just, the village bought this vacant property, and they tore down the abandoned building, which is an eyesore, which is like Kmart, you know, that's been there forever, and that's still standing, that's an eyesore. But maybe we could just have, designate a big part of that property as open space, as nature space, and keep everybody, you know, they can see their sunsets and have nature instead of big buildings that just are an eyesore, kind of, honestly, and just brings more, it's already a high-density neighborhood, and just to add more to it, I don't think anybody wants that. But I really do think, like I said, Gray's Lake, they do, they buy properties, and they're making a commitment to open space, nature, and I know their property is also very marshy. I mean, that's not a really great buildable spot either. And as others have said, there's other properties in the neighborhood, like a vacant land, that would be, would benefit from that, but not that property. Thank you.
My name is Curtis Jacobs. I live at 854 Fox Chase Drive. I just wanted to remind everybody that for all of the people here that have come, there are so many more in the community who were not able to come and did make their wishes known on the petition that was submitted to you as a part of the paperwork from the last two meetings. So please take everybody's wishes into account before you do your vote.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Bob Urban, and I reside at 846 Fox Chase Drive. My residence is right in front of Fox Chase Park entrance. Your Honor, the traffic flow down there, they're flying down there, and I wanted them to put one of those stops, or those bumps, the speed bump, they're flying. And if you put this project, it's going to be bad, all right? And like I said, Your Honor, I live right across from the park. I'm calling the police on numerous occasions, okay, of teenagers doing things that they shouldn't be doing. My car got vandalized, okay? Couple other people had their residences vandalized, all right? And I'm just worried about what type of clientele is going to be in these apartment buildings, okay? I've been here for 27 years, brought up on the south side of Chicago, all right? I left Chicago because of all the gangs and all this drugs and all that. I moved up here for my kids. My daughter's a nurse now, my son is a truck driver, all right? I'm a retired therapist for 46 years. And, Your Honor, please give us some thought on this. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Comments in the comment section right now? Are you none, Scott? Does the board have any questions at all right now on the matter at all? The only thing I can say is, this community is almost 28,000-strong. We have lost, in the last census, a few hundred, I believe, and the only way the community will ever succeed and continue to grow is if we have growth. In our locations that we live in, we can't expect someone to own a property and not be able to sell it. So we do want to accommodate anything we can. We do hear you and understand you. So, at this point? Yes?
I'm just, I just, they're saying there's some questions that weren't answered.
Yep.
I'm just wondering, could we table this and get answers to those questions?
At this point, we can't table, there's no reason to table it any longer, but we can try to get some of the questions, but a lot of this has been answered in the meetings.
Mayor, if I, if I may add, so a lot of the questions that were asked, they were answered, they might not have been answered directly, but answered specifically, I'm not sure, and there were many people here that I recognized from the last two. A lot of the questions that are being asked are matters of ordinance. What can they do, what can they not do? So they are answered because there are restrictions on certain things.
Specific light ordinance.
The questions that were brought up today as far as building height and departure and the variances, those questions were answered as well, because examples were given that we do have three other buildings in this town that are five stories, are actually taller and closer to residential, less than 100 feet from residential in more dense areas. It is not uncommon to have departures or variances. As far as, another question was, again, about location, and Mayor, you mentioned realistically is the fact that if someone was to come to the Village of Round Lake Beach, specifically my department, Economic Development Department, and ask, hey, where do you, you know, where would you think something could go? We go to the comprehensive plan, and we show them open land, but we don't own those lands. When someone comes here and says, hey, I have a piece of property I would like to purchase, what are the steps for me to do what I would like to do legally? We process that application, as we did in this case. So while I know it's come up for Super Kmart and the Hook Farm, I mean, this at one point was Hook Farm, Super Kmart at one point was Hook Farm, these are privately-owned properties that all we can do is absolutely listen to the residents, but Mayor and Board, obviously, we process these applications with variances, again, that are not uncommon, not just for height, not just for density, for the other variances that were suggested in there. So those do exist, so that is not. So those were answered. As far as traffic, many of the traffic questions, specifically one that we've heard and the gentleman mentioned towards the end, which is the narrowing of Masters Lane, correct? This is something that, back when I was police chief, we saw in other parts of the town, similarly near the high school. The difficulty with that is the fact that the apartment complex is not there right now, but that problem still exists, so I would obviously offer that the chief should look at it. No, that the chief should look at it, but if it is a concern, that is a matter for the board, you know, to determine ordinance changes for parking restrictions. We do have some streets in town, Lotus Avenue, there are other streets in towns that do have parking restrictions, but then again, when those parking restrictions are passed, obviously the residents need to know that those restrictions apply to them as well. So it just has to be talked about and communicated and figure out, and those are things that, when I hear the concerns, those concerns have been existing for years, so we should probably deal with those concerns as well, regardless of whether the apartment complex comes or not. But as far as questions being answered, they have been answered, it's just that one question may have been asked here and answered at a later point, so to put them all together, as far as the questions that we can answer on the village board side, on the village and staff side, we believe that all of them have been addressed.
Correct. So the 83, the 83 light was one that was brought up a couple times tonight. I'm sorry?
So, on our review, on our review of the traffic analysis, there would be no reason to submit to IDOT, because the numbers did not meet the requirements by IDOT. I know it's unpopular, but we would not submit something to any agency without meeting their threshold to begin with.
All right.
Since traffic seems to be a resounding concern, is...
Folks? You got to be quiet. The board, this is the board's time, okay? Everyone gave their comments. This is the board's time. You're talking over a trustee who is now considering it, so please, please be quiet.
Since traffic seems to be a resounding concern for these residents, is, what is the probability of doing maybe a more extensive study or another traffic study?
The traffic study was originally done, and then a week-long one was done after the fact, from planning and zoning, making that exact same statement.
So more than one?
Correct. Yeah, the second one was a week-long, and I'm not quite sure where, I did hear someone say something about two days. There was an original one day, and then a week-long.
Yes, so there was an original traffic study, and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that that study needed to be a little bit broader and involve several other intersections. The applicant did do that study and involve other applicants, and the findings of that studies, which you already have, this traffic engineer stated that there was no significant increase, and I know significant seems like such a clinical cold term, but my understanding and the explanation given is the fact that while there would be a flow increase, the traffic control signals would be able to accommodate that flow increase. Now, I understand the increase may be bigger flow, but as we know from working here for many years, myself 24 years, the chief longer than that, that yes, there will be a flow increase, but the stop sign at Hook, people stop, and then they go. The Millstone people, we, as part of our daily travels throughout the village, doing inspections and so on and so forth, we do stop at that traffic light, and then the queue does clear. Now, there is a queue, but it does clear, so it does handle the flow. I mean, it would be fantastic if the flow was less, but the flow is accommodated by the current traffic control signals. I know there was a mention also about the medical facility. I did look back in the history of, as far as the consideration for that, and from what I understand, Mayor, I'd have to go back and recheck, but I understand that there was a suggestion of perhaps asking for a traffic signal, not that there was an actual demand request or approval of a traffic signal at Fox Chase and 83. It was a suggestion, but that did not come to fruition, so that suggestion never went forward.
Right.
If I may direct you there. If I'm not mistaken, the traffic study, there's grading levels that they had, like, I believe it was A through F, and right now it's considered an A, which is maybe not what the public believes, but it's considered an A. And when the traffic study was completed, it went to a grade B, correct? It's never pushed over a threshold where we needed to engage.
Correct. And that's correct, sir. So basically, again, we would not submit, we would not submit, whether AR decides to submit or not, but we would not require them to submit it if it doesn't even meet the threshold for a traffic signal. Now, that being said, if that was a commercial development, someone said, what if it's a commercial development? Would it have to be looked at again? As you saw, one suggestion is a commercial development would increase traffic by 140%. While there may be 200, 300 cars in this subdivision, as proposed, a commercial development, in my experience with speaking with retail businesses, they want to see 200, 300 cars an hour, not a day. They want to see the cars coming through there, and I would suggest, obviously, they would have the same problems coming onto Route 83, since Route 83 has not been expanded, which is really, the focus of the village is trying to get the state to expand that road to accommodate, create the gaps in traffic so people could pull out, but any type of commercial in there, we would hope would do better than 200 or 300 cars an hour, just like Meyer, just like Walmart, just like when Super Kmart was open. We would be looking for that, and those folks would go through the subdivision, just as someone mentioned, just as everyone else does. So this would actually be a lesser use. I know it's hard to believe, but it would be a lesser use. And we see that in our other retail. Goodwill, for instance, is a very highly-traveled road because of Goodwill. If there was another shop similar to Goodwill and successes Goodwill, then you would expect way greater increase in traffic.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, at this time, an ordinance approving a map amendment in special-use plan development with certain special uses and departures for property commonly known as 36299 on North Illinois Route 83 was sent from Planning and Zoning to us as a recommended use. If I could, a motion and a second for the, for the vote. Anyone from the board want to make a motion or a second tonight?
Mayor, could I have a second?
Yep.
Could I have a second with counsel?
Yep.
Please?
Yep.
Scott, can I trouble you first? Just one quick minute. It's a protocol question only.
Yep. At this moment, because I do know a couple of our boards need to step out for a second, yes, for a little break, it's been a little bit longer tonight than it has, so some of them want to use the facilities. Give them just a minute, if we could, please.
Bathrooms are in the hallway. The gentleman just went to the right.
Email me?
I emailed you. I did not, I did not attend, did not hear.
Oh, yeah.
That was a press, that was a press meeting. Will there be some written response to that question?
I apologize if I didn't answer. I was out all last week. Sir? After the meeting, Director Rivera would be the person to ask.
I, I'm, I'll make sure it gets...
We're all back? Alright. Alright, any, any questions more from the board? Any, any comments that you would like to make?
Well, I just, I think, Mayor, if, if I may, I'm seeing us all kind of stare at each other, wondering who's going to make the motion. And I'd like to motion that we postpone until the next board meeting so we can have further discovery. That gives the board time to do their homework. That gives us time to pick Director Rivera's brain and to have questions. I, I think the board should be responsible enough to bring forth all questions they have, to see if they can get the answers they need.
So then we will, we'll, we'll put together a list. Put together a list and have any questions answered directly to the board. And then come back at the next meeting with a vote.
That's, I think the board needs to be educated on what it is they're going to motion on and what it is they're going to say yea or nay to.
Alright, so then can I have a motion? To delay, to delay, to delay this vote to the next board meeting, the third Monday of June, it would be June nineteenth.
Still moved.
Second.
Still move by trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by trustee, uh, Abara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, any nays? Alright, so we will put together a list of questions directed that you, that you may have. We will have them answered, and then we will come back at the next meeting for a vote. And it will just be a vote, correct?
Yes.
Alright. The...
Questions be public?
I'm sorry? The questions will come from the board and, and, I mean, they will, they'll be addressed publicly.
And where and when?
June nineteenth at the board meeting. All, we'll, we'll read through all the questions the board member has, any of the board members have that they want answered. Same, same time every, every third Monday of the month is our, our, our board meeting. Just, yeah, so the third Monday of the month. Alright, we're going to be moving on to business item E. I'll give a minute to let her unpass so we can continue with the meeting. Hmm? Something? No, I think yeah. They're, they're... Yeah, we have to continue on with the meeting, so if you have a question? Other, it's another person's property, sir. We have no control over that. We have no control over it. Thank you. Alright, we're going to go ahead and start off with business item E. An ordinance appointing a director and alternate director to represent the village around Lake Beach on the Central Lake County Joint Action Water Agency. I am the director, and trustee Stout will be my alternate. Just re, re, removing, uh, recommitting that from last year. If we could get a motion and a second?
Still moved.
Still move by trustee Abara.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Uh, business item F, a resolution appointing a director and alternate director to represent the village around Lake Beach on the solid waste agency of Lake County. On this one, I am the director and the assistant, uh, uh, the assistant administrator will be my alternate. Uh, can I have a motion and a second?
Still moved. Second.
By trustee Husk, second by trustee Valdez. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have that, motion will pass. Resolution approving the purchase of a boat left from Skipper Bud's for a not-to-exceed amount of eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. Chief Wilding?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Board. We discussed this at the committee, the whole Commander Barr came in, who is the head of our marine unit, and discussed some of the issues that we had last year as being the first year of the marine unit. One of them was the timely dispatch of the boat from our parking lot that it was, had to be trailered. We had some issues with storage over at Alpine Club, the, without a bilge pump and without a cover and such, and keeping the boat out of the water. Uh, this would allow us to quickly dispatch the boat if there was an emergency. The boat would already be on the water. It would be secured and locked with a lift wheel. Um, so we think that this will benefit the marine unit moving forward for twenty-twenty-three and beyond.
Very much. I know this is presented at the committee of the whole as well. Uh, can I have a motion and a second?
Still moved.
Still move by trustee Valdez, second by trustee Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Alright, the ayes have that as well. Business item H, a resolution approving a proposal from ten forty-one Incorporated for a not-to-exceed amount of two thousand dollars. Chief Wilding?
Uh, thank you again, Mayor. Uh, we did discuss this at the committee as well. Uh, this is just a continuation agreement with the ten forty-one chaplain and counseling service for the officers. Uh, they also do chaplain care. They do officiate some of the ceremonies, like the one coming up for Memorial Day. So this is just a continuation for the next year to continue their services for the police department and for our community events.
Right, if I could, a motion and a second, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Still move by trustee, uh, Abara, second by trustee Husk, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
The ayes have that as well. Motion will carry. Business item I, a resolution approving a master software license agreement with Dakra Adjudication Systems LLC for not-to-exceed amount of fifteen sixty-eight per month in twenty-twenty-four, eighteen hundred per month in twenty-twenty-five, and two thousand per month in FY twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you again. We discussed this also at the committee, that our current web-based platform called MSI that the officers use to electronically issue ordinance and parking violations will be going offline this year, and Dakra is the company that purchased MSI. So they will actually be importing and migrating MSI into their program. So it was just a natural fit for us to go with Dakra. Um, you can see that the expense for this current fiscal year is not that much different. And Dakra also offers some applications that MSI did not, including adjudication hearing management, fine management, and an administrative toll management component that we didn't have before. So this will actually expand on some of the things that the police department and our records clerks utilize for a very little addition to the cost of it.
Making us more efficient as well.
That is correct.
Alright. Uh, motion and a second for the approval of the resolution approving master software license agreement.
Still moved.
Still move by trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by trustee Stout. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Alright, business item J, a resolution approving agreement with 3D Design Studio for landscape architectural engineering and architectural services for the lakefront park for our Ozlake, uh, construction project that is a grant program from the state. For the amount of a hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, Director Hill.
Yes, Mayor and Board, um, as the mayor described, this, this item is to secure our design and engineering fees for 3D design. They did help us secure the five hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant from the state. Um, so now, um, that was only based on preliminary plans. Now we need to do the final plans, go out to bid. And this will be a great addition and complete the lakefront park to the north.
That will be a beautiful district park, uh, the lakefront, and, uh, something our community can use and enjoy for years. And it is something that we were able to get a, uh, the grant from the state for the completion of the project. So can we have a motion and a second for the hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollar resolution approving the agreement with 3D Design?
Still moved.
Still move by trustee Valdez.
Second.
Second by trustee Husk, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, business item K, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code twenty-three dash five dash eight, uh, for fifty thousand dollars in construction engineering. We've got three of these coming up, I believe. Uh, Director Hills?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Board. So, um, there are actually four items for this, or four resolutions for this item. Um, we awarded a bid to Schroder Asphalt to do the MFT program. That was just under a million dollars. We're recommending the board to, to, um, we will be recommending the board to award a contract for a million dollars for, um, the road construction from Schroder Asphalt. However, IDOT does require resolutions to utilize the MFT rebuild Illinois money for construction and engineering. So, uh, the first three are for IDOT, and the last one would be for, um, a contractor, authorizing a contract.
Director Hills has, has given us the information, as you were giving in the committee, the whole as well, for item K, L, M, and N. Um, we will be voting separately on all three, but that is the explanation for all, I should say, for all four. That is the explanation for all four. So for business item K, a resolution approving, uh, for the improvements under the Illinois Highway Code for fifty thousand dollars in construction engineering, can I have a motion and a second?
Still moved. Second.
By trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by trustee Husk, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Alright, uh, business item L, a resolution for the improvement under the Illinois Highway Code twenty-three five dash nine to use seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Is that supposed to be thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, thousand of MFT funds. Uh, can I have a motion and a second, please?
Still moved.
Still move by trustee Davis.
Second.
Second by trustee Valdez, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
The ayes have that. Motion will carry. Uh, business item N, the resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code twenty-three five dash ten to use two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of rebuild Illinois funds. Uh, can I have a motion and a second?
Still moved.
Second.
Trustee Husk, second by trustee Abara, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
I love it when we're able to use, uh, the state and other governments' money to complete the projects we need here in our community. So the final one is a resolution authorizing improvement award contract to Schroder Asphalt Services for a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Million dollars.
Million dollars, I'm sorry. First one didn't have an extra zero. This one I just read wrong. So can I have a, uh, motion and a second?
Still moved.
Still move by trustee Davis.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Motion will carry. Uh, resolution, uh, business item O, approving expenditures for pavement patching for a not-to-exceed of sixty-five thousand dollars. Scott, Director Hills?
Yes, again, this item was discussed at the committee meeting. Our asphalt patching is a annual program that we utilize to patch roads that don't make the, um, reconstruction or resurfacing projects. We're looking to award the contract to Chicagoland Paving for the budgeted amount of sixty-five thousand.
Can I have a motion and a second?
Still moved.
Still move by trustee Abara.
Second.
Second by trustee Stout, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
The ayes have that as well. Motion will carry. Business item E, a resolution approving proposals for Cedar Lake Road dam improvements and lakefront park pier bank stabilization from Canyon Contracting for a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Director Hills?
Yes, again, um, discussed at the committee meeting. So, um, we did get proposals from Canyon Construction to stabilize the erosion along the Cedar Lake Road dam, and then also along our existing piers at the lakefront, um, to prevent any further erosion.
Alright, can I have a motion and a second for the resolution approving the proposal for the improvements at the lakefront park pier bank stabilization uh, from Canyon Contracting?
Still moved.
Still moved.
Second.
Um, still move by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Valdez. A roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Have that, and then business item O, a resolution approving and extension of the agreement with USA Management for Lifeguard Services, uh, for a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars uh, for our lakefront, uh, lifeguard services.
Again, this was, um, discussed at the committee of the whole. Um, what was discussed is we may be able to get a discount to convert this to a three-year. Uh, they have not given us the proposal, but to secure lifeguards for this year, this would be the maximum amount, thirty-four thousand three seventy-five. If, um, they give us a proposal to retroactive a three-year contract, we would take it back to the board to amend the contract. But to secure lifeguards for this year, um, we will award this, um, that was budgeted. And then we can always go back if it's, um, beneficial to the favorable.
Alright, so resolution approving and extension of the agreement with USA Management for Lifeguard Services for this year, not-to-exceed amount of thirty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Still moved.
Still move by trustee Husk, the second by trustee, um, Abara, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Alright, um, an ordinance repealing and replacing section eight dash one dash one of the village code regarding certain village code regulations. Director Rivera? Um, Director Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor, this is very straightforward, we are updating our codes from twenty eighteen building codes to twenty twenty-one building codes as explained during the committee of the whole meeting.
Can I have a motion and a second for the repealing and replacing section eight dash one dash one of the village code? So moved by Trustee, uh, Davis?
Second.
Second by Trustee Stout? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Oh, roll call vote?
Roll call vote.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Avara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Have that as well, business item S, an ordinance amending section three dash two dash eight of the village code regarding the number of class B and K liquor licenses, Director Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor, this is a, a request to increase the, uh, those liquor licenses because there is a business that's looking to come into, uh, the village and they have applied for the liquor license. It would be to go into the Silver Oaks Shopping Center, that place has been vacant for quite a long time and they do have a customer that would like to open up a liquor store there.
All right, um, I know this was discussed at the committee whole, um, for the ordinance amending section three dash two dash eight, the village regarding the number of class B and K liquor licenses. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Trustee Stout?
Second.
Second.
Second, I believe I had, uh, Trustee Avara quietly, um, and can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Avara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Excuse me. Uh, motion will carry. Business item T, an ordinance authorizing the sale of the properties commonly known as twelve oh seven and twelve oh nine Sunnyside Lane around Lake Beach. Again, this is something discussed in the committee of the whole, um, Director Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor, again, this is village-owned property we took during a judicial deed for a, a house that was, uh, uninhabitable. Um, so it is being, uh, as advised by the board, is being sold, uh, to someone who is going to tear down the house and build a new one.
Always nice to have, uh, have things done for us and then also to add another, uh, another residence, uh, to our community and tax roll. So greatly appreciate it, um, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by Trustee, uh, Valdez? Second by Trustee Cleveland? And can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Avara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Ayes have that, uh, motion will carry. Business item U, an ordinance authorizing the sale of property commonly known as thirteen twenty-two Popular, Poplar Avenue in Round Lake Beach. Uh, Director Rivera, I know this was just like the last one?
Similar to the last one, this is actually a property that did not have a house on it, it was a, a vacant lot, these lots are only forty feet wide, so they're not ideal for actually building on. So this is being sold to a neighboring resident who requested, uh, to be able to purchase it, um, with the restriction that they consolidate their lots, therefore they would not be able to put a primary structure on this, this will just become side yard for them.
Perfect. All right, um, another lot back on the rolls, um, so can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by Trustee Stout?
Second.
Second by Trustee Husk? And a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Avara?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, um, all right, we are now at the end of our meeting, um, where we are open to, uh, regular public participation. Um, if anyone from the public has any questions or comments for the board, please come to the podium, state your name for the record and followed by a question or comments. Um, please, uh, uh, remember, uh, three minutes, um, to be able to give everyone opportunity. Um, anyone like to come to the podium today?
Pat Sheeran, twenty-three thirty-seven Scott Court, Round Lake Beach, Fox Chase subdivision resident. Um, this goes back, uh, to a point of order brought up in the plan commission hearings, uh, you may have, uh, heard it.
One of our staff?
No, it was during the plan commission meeting prior to hearings. No, by me, as a member of the audience.
You can't make a point of order, sir. You can't make a point of order in a, in a meeting, only the board or trustees.
Well, they entertained it.
Your comment, please, go ahead, uh, but you can't make a trust, you can't make a, a point of order as a, as a resident. You can make a comment.
Okay, we'll call it a comment instead of a point of order. Um, but it was brought to the attention of the staff, uh, the current village code with regards to public notice uses the term public way in the following manner, and I'll read it verbatim. Um, section three fifty point three of the zoning code, item C, uh, item three C actually, one, two, three. Uh, the applicant will deliver a notice by certified mail, return receipt requested, or by personal delivery to all owners, to owner of all property located in whole or in part within two hundred and fifty feet of the subject property measured in all directions excluding public ways and railroad rights of way. The question is the use and interpretation of the term public ways. It is distinctly different and apart from right of way, as in road right of way, where a mechanism of dedication is employed to dedicate roadway rights of, well, public right of ways for roadway purposes, not just the road, but public sidewalks, bike paths, all that. Public way refers to publicly owned properties, including parks, harbors.
Owned by the village.
And in the application of that term public way and the determination of who receives public notices, I think there was an error in the way that the staff interpreted it and generated the list of notices, um, at least in the one case that we were paying attention to, uh, which was the AR development. If you follow the definition of public way, and this, this will be a, uh, conversation that'll continue with, uh, the director. In the email that I sent to your attention, um, last month, uh, and copied, um, uh, Mr. Hillisheim, uh, I believe he's...
Mr. Hill?
Hillisheim. He was copied on that email.
Yeah, of course.
Um, the, the application of the term right of way was used, um, with notice being sent to sixty-two property owners. If public way was used, that notice would have gone out to an additional fifty-three property owners beyond the sixty-two that were on his list. And this affects all cases because they all rely upon the proper interpretation of that section of the zoning code that defines who gets notified for public hearings. So it's not just the AR development project, it's something that affects all public hearings and it could create, um...
So we have your, we have, and, and, there was an answer given for this.
And...
And we'll go ahead and give it, uh, another, another, to him or Director Rivera who answered this question as well, because I was in on that conversation.
Yeah, this was, this was answered at the last meeting, it was part of the staff memo that went to the planning and zoning commission that the village board, or, or, I'm sorry, the village staff has interpreted, uh, public way consistently for as long as they could go back and look, and that public way has been, uh, interpreted as village property and village right of way. Despite what you found on the internet, that isn't the legal definition that's in the village code, nor is that a requirement...
There is.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Nor is it a requirement of, uh, the statute that, that addresses public notice. So the board, the, the village has always treated public way as being village property and not going across, um, and, and making determinations as to other public property. So, um, this was addressed by staff, uh, over a month ago and it apparently didn't make its way back to, um, this gentleman, but it, it was addressed for the planning and zoning commission before the last meeting.
Well, and, and that's, that's part of, part of a greater problem about transparency, yes. None of this information that was entered into the public record and read into the public record at that plan commission hearing, the, the plan commission report that you allude to was made available to the public. If that's the method and the mechanism that you recite as answering this specific question, I would not have had access to it, I don't have access to it. I have to FOIA those documents that were read into the record in a public hearing because they're not on the website. No information on the AR development project is on the website.
This is comment section, so we're answering these questions just to, just to make sure you get, you get an answer?
Same.
Okay?
Sure.
But this, we're given, and actually we're given back to you, I believe, as well.
Mayor, if, if, if I could, if I could just stay during the first meeting, um, when the gentleman brought, brought up the concern about proper notice, an answer was given. I know it's not the answer that the gentleman was looking for, but it was given that we did give proper notice at that point. Um, um, the suggestion to, 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 to his email as far as other potential definitions, looked up as, as Attorney Puma mentioned on the internet. Uh, uh, sir, even the, even the, I believe that the, the definitions you posed, you stopped short of the part where it says, "under the direct jurisdiction and control of the village." And the Round Lake Park District is one that owns that property, which did receive proper notification, as do any other property owner would. So that has been actually answered, not just in the first meeting, but in the second meeting, um, unfortunately, it's not the answer that the gentleman is looking for, but it has been answered and it, and has not changed, it has been consistent.
Not defined in your code.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, sir, for your comment. Any other comments in the public participation? All right, hearing none at this time then, sorry. Um, we do not have executive session tonight for proper pending litigation, land acquisition, sale of land, executive session minutes, personnel, or collective bargaining. Um, we have no action on executive session items, and can I have a motion for an adjournment?
So moved.
So moved by Trustee Cleveland?
Second.
Second by Trustee Avara? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, we are adjourned.